Good evening. I call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Apache Junction. The date is Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. The time is now 7:00 PM. I invite you to stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Rudy?
Commissioner Barker.
Here.
Commissioner Begum.
Here.
Commissioner Cantwell.
Here.
Vice Chair Hansi.
Here.
Chairman Heck.
Here.
Commissioner Cross.
Here.
Commissioner Gage.
Here.
Everyone present, we have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Rudy. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of the agenda and consideration and approval of the regular meeting minutes of March 23rd, 2021. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda and the minutes?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the agenda as presented and approve the minutes from the March 23rd, 2021, regular meeting.
Thank you. I have here a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a second. Roll call. Rudy?
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Barker.
Yes.
Commissioner Begum.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantwell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hansi.
Yes.
Chairman Heck.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. All right. There's one public hearing this evening. It's case P-21-6-PZ. It's a presentation, discussion, public hearing, and consideration of a proposed plan, development, major amendment requested by Sridhar Krishnan of AUM Investments of the one-acre property located at 512 North Valley Drive, currently zoned RM-1/PD, high-density multiple-family residential by plan development, to allow the addition of seven units for a total of 13 units on the property. And...
Hello. I'm Morgan Hen. I'm the planning intern for the Development Services, and I will be going over case P-21-6-PZ.
Yeah, we can.
Oh, I'm sorry. To go over 512 North Valley Drive. My apologies. So here is just an aerial map of the property, and the applicant is requesting a proposed plan development major amendment of the one-acre property currently zoned RM1-PD, high-density multiple-family residential by plan development, to allow the addition of seven units for the total of 13 units on the property, as well as onsite improvements, including laundry facilities, additional storage, additional parking, landscaping, updating the exterior, and a playground for residents. So a little background on the property. The apartment rental property was established prior to the city adopting its original zoning ordinance in 1985, and it was originally six units. The new zoning code in 2014 changed it from general rural to RS20M, which is medium-density single-family detached residential. And then, under ordinance 1430, case PZ-5-16, approved the rezoning of the subject property from RS20M to RM1-1/PD. So here's a zoning map. So as you can see, this subject property is circled in its RM1-PD, which is high-density multiple-family residential by plan development. And then, the immediate neighboring properties are zoned RS20M, which is the medium density. But you can see around, so to the north, we have another high-density project, which is Ironwood Station, which is disapproved. To the south, you have the business district. To the north, you have business and mobile home parks. So here's the general plan map for future land development, and you can see again that the property is circled, but surrounding it is medium-density rural. But then, to the north, south, you have business, mixed use, and then, high-density also to the north, south, and east. Here's a site plan. So up here, you can see a playground. You have the laundry facilities down here. These dark shaded buildings are the existing buildings. And then, these over to the side are all the new additional units. So here is the side elevations, and it is one-story, so it's not going to block any views, which I know is a concern. So you really won't see it. It's not going to be any higher than what they already are. Here's an updated color board with a new updated exterior, which is revamp it. Here's the landscaping plan. Again, you can see the proposed parks and other additional amenities. For public input, there was a neighborhood meeting held in February 5th, 2021, and four neighbors attended, and their primary concerns were regarding density, crime, traffic, and again, the height. The city also sent out public hearing notices noting the time, place, and proposed request. And staff received two letters, one which was recently today, which I put in front of your computers for you, and they both stated similar concerns regarding density, safety, and property values. Staff recommends any approval of P-21-26-PZ be subject to the conditions found in the staff report in order to ensure the project meets the needs of the community. Any questions? Also, city council will be June 15th.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah. I just want a clarification. This is a one-acre property, correct? And the current zoning would allow for 10 dwelling units on that acre. Is that correct?
I believe this property is 13.
I know that's what he wants, but the current...
No, I believe under the ordinance, it was allowed up to 13.
The current zoning would allow the 13.
Yeah. And the future plan was up to 40 dwelling units per acre.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, Kentwell.
I'm a little bit confused on this, okay? This dates back to before we had the zoning. So in many respects, this was grandfathered in, and then, when I was reading through the initial material, it sounded like this was changed to an RM1-PD, basically because it was already there. Was there any specific action that the city did to approve that RM1-PD, or is this still considered a grandfathered, non-conforming RS20?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cantwell, I've got a little background on this. This property was developed with the apartments in a single-family zone before the city was a city. In 2010, when we adopted our general plan, the property owners at that time approached the city council and asked the city council, by the way, when we adopted our zoning maps and our general plan, the property owners approached the city council and asked them, you know, as long as you're updating the general plan, as long as you're updating the zoning maps, would you please rezone our property to apartments because of the land use? Council did not rezone the apartments, but they directed staff to do a city-initiated rezoning after the other approvals were out of the way. The property owner at the time was a Mr. Roddaway. Staff did process the appropriate rezoning to multifamily with conditions, hook up the sewer, make it look nice, put in some landscaping, those types of conditions. And another condition was that at such time as the owner or a future owner wanted to increase the number of units, they had to do a plan development amendment. So that's the background, and that's why this case is before you tonight, because the new owners are proposing to add more units, therefore, they need a plan development amendment.
So the current zoning has been approved by the city through action?
Yes.
And it's not a grandfathered, non-conformant?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It was council-approved rezoning.
Mr. Chair, if I could maybe add, Rudy could help me if I'm wrong here. So I think under that ordinance, to make it RM1-PD, there was a proposal to build, wasn't it, some parking and storage in the back here? So that, I think, was also added, so it wasn't just simply rezoning it, but there had to be landscaping upgrades, et cetera, and they were going to build a building in the back that was just really for storage for the property itself. And that never came to fruition. Mr. Roddaway sold it to the current owners.
Chairman Heck.
Yes, Mr. Cross.
Regarding that, did it not state in there that the property, that if they didn't build within two years, that it was subject to being rescinded?
We have that clause in a lot of ordinances. Rudy's going to check that one to see. Normally, the city would have to undertake the exact same process and rezone it, go through a rezoning process to zone it back to RS20M.
Correct.
So that's a standard condition that we have in there. The city rarely goes forward with that. But we can if we want to. So, but we did not in this case.
Chairman Heck.
Yes.
Also, on the west side of the property, I noticed that there is a easement that runs up through. Does it stop at the southwest corner of that property, or does that easement continue through? In other words, it appears that the playground might be in part of the easement.
That's a private utility easement, I believe? So there's not a, so that's for electrical?
Because one of the concerns that was written from one of the homeowners in the area was about reading the meters for that property, and if they would be trespassing on their property to get to the meter. Has that...
Well, SRP would be the one that reads the meters, so...
No, not electric meter.
It was water.
Water. The concern was over water.
Oh, water meter?
Okay. All right.
I don't know why they'd have to come on this property to read someone's...
I don't know if anybody here knows where the meters are or what is in reference. Maybe someone in the public, when the public hearing starts, they can do it, or the applicant can speak, but...
Somebody's raising their hand out there.
Well, but it's not a public hearing yet, so you can ask that question to whoever has an answer for that.
Mr. Chairman, I might have a little more background on this. This subdivision does have a utility easement at the common property line. I think it's on eight feet on both sides of the easement. However, they are not dedicated public alleys, so people can build to the center of those easements. And my understanding is, as long as they continue to allow the utility companies' access to, you know, service whatever there's a need to service, or read whatever meters they need to read, they're usually okay with that. If you look a little bit to the south of this property, I think some property owners there may have preserved a pass-through or an easement, a walk-through for the utility easement, but the subject property, the property to the west, properties to the north, apparently did not reserve that eight-through, eight-feet walk-through space. So it's kind of hit and miss. Some people preserve it, some people don't. Some people put up fences, some people don't. And that's not unusual for this part of the city and other parts of the city as well that don't have dedicated public alleys.
Okay. Other questions? I have one, and I realize, Megan, you may not have the answer to this question, but it seemed that one of the concerns raised by the neighbors was crime, and it seemed to be associated with folks that rented or were residing at this location. You know, obviously, crime for any of us is a concern. And I understand that the, in the one letter, there was, the son-in-law was an AJPD police officer. I don't know if there's any way to try and determine whether or not there is, was any, I mean, ultimately, we really can't, we can't base our decision on that, but I don't, and again, I don't know how you can, you know, you can't say no to a possible renter just because they looked like they might break the law. But was there any unusual, I mean, was anything come out? Was it, there seemed to be unusual amounts of crime coming out of this location?
I did actually reach out to our police department contact from our staff comments, and just asking about the property and if he could give me any insight, but he hasn't gotten back to me yet. But I can get that to you once I find out.
Well, thank you. At least, I appreciate you reaching out to him. As again I said, I realize it's, you have to be really careful. You can't just, you know, can't deny people, you know, the right to rent places. One thing, and again, I don't know if you're, or whether the applicant will have to answer this question. The current units are a little worn out. I don't know if there's any plan to upgrade them as well beyond the brand-new ones?
Yes, there is.
There is?
Yes. I can also send you guys the site plan if you would like, or I mean, sorry, the floor plans. So they are planning to be updated.
Okay.
Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is he going to speak next?
Well, I would like him to speak, yeah. So if there are no more questions for Megan?
Morgan.
Morgan.
Well, sorry, Ma, Morgan.
Okay.
Sorry.
Happens all the time.
That's right. I called Kelsey Kelly last week. I might as well get your name wrong, because, sorry, sorry, Morgan. All right. So at that point, then, maybe we could ask the applicant if he would come up and speak to us, please?
Thank you.
Please give us your name, address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sridhar Krishnan. I own AUM Investments, which, it's the owner of the property. I live at 2251 West Pearl Drive in Phoenix. So my intent is to, when I bought the property from Mr. Roddaway, my intent was to improve the lot that was there at the back, and Mr. Roddaway had given some insights into what he planned to do and what he was not able to do. So it took me some time, and I kind of felt whatever is the best I could do, and I came up with a plan that, that's like, does not hinder anybody around and make it accommodate everybody's requirements. So as far as the improvements for the existing unit is concerned, that's being done as needed. So whenever a tenant moves out, I'm upgrading all the units. So I can probably send some pictures of how it looks inside today, all the existing units.
Okay. May I ask, is the, are all of those six units currently occupied?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from, yes, Commissioner Barker?
I'm looking at the site plan, and these are probably silly questions, okay? The ones with the apartments on that one, yeah. You have a walkway at the upper northwest side and the lower southwest side, and I'm wondering where that goes?
Sorry?
Where does it go, that walkway? It's a walkway there, and I'm trying to figure out where it goes.
That is, so the one that runs all along the length of the property on both the sides?
Okay. So it'll go through the landscape or through the backyards? I mean, sorry, I'm not seeing it.
So if you're referring to the ones in front of the property?
No, it's at the rear.
It's at the rear. It's in the upper northwest corner. There, it says "walkway," and in the lower southwest corner, it says "walkway." And I was wondering what that walkway was for?
So that is a kind of a walking track around that area, the one that is circled?
Ooh, it goes around? Oh, I see. Thank you. I did not realize that. I was looking at that, wondering. And I was also wondering, are you going to, you currently have a wooden fence around the property. Are you going to maintain that wooden fence, or are you planning on building a wall? What do you plan?
Yeah, we are going to build a wall.
So the property to the north has some buildings that appear, I don't know whether they're buildings or sheds or what, but there's something that appears to be right on and slightly over the property line. How are you going to accommodate that? Thank you. Right, the two buildings that are right there? I mean, that concerns me, because you don't have much room from the back of the apartments, the proposed apartments, to the property line in the first place. So, I mean, that's a very small area, and I just wondered how you're going to accommodate those two sheds.
Okay. Yeah, I don't remember seeing those small, I know that there is a gate over there. I don't remember seeing those structures adjacent to the gate.
Okay.
So those are, they appear to be less than 120 square feet.
Right.
Hard to say.
Yes.
But they're supposed to have a three-foot setback. So when the fence, if the fence goes up, there's going to be a brick wall along there. I think, working with the next-door neighbor, perhaps to ask them to meet the zoning code, because they are required to have three-foot setbacks.
Yeah, I went back there. It's definitely between that and the landscaping that's overflowing.
So the smaller sheds are generally easy to move. You take everything out, move it three feet, put everything back in. So again, there's a lot of those around the city.
Yeah.
About 100% of them, we don't know about.
Yeah.
So this is how you find out about them, I guess.
And that neighbor requested a wall. So the neighbor, the person living there, he wanted a wall to be built, so we will work with them.
Okay. Thank you for answering some of my silly questions.
All right, Chair. Yes?
Would you consider moving maybe the dumpster away from the playground?
Yeah, really.
I kind of see why you're doing where it is, because of the way the flow of the traffic is for the trash truck to come in, but I think you could just reverse your flow.
Yeah, it could come down here.
Move the trash to the other side and probably make it a lot safer for the kids and everything as well.
So we can do that.
You know, it's not a deal breaker or anything, but I think it would be much better for the community and safety for your kids.
Yeah, I agree.
I have a question. So the parking, did I read, and I can't find it unfortunately, are you designing it for 26 parking spaces? 26?
I don't have the count handy.
Anybody help me on that?
I counted them earlier. There is a bunch.
I can't find it. I didn't count 26, but I, is it designed to have two parking spaces per unit?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
There's a garage, too.
Right now, there's a garage, and then, some of these side, I still don't think I came up with 26, but, so that, okay, so...
I'm Naveen Pathing of Pathing Architects. I've been helping Sridhar on this project. Address, 727 East Bethany Home, Phoenix, Arizona. I've been helping Sridhar on this. Great questions, by the way. We can move the dumpsters, we can move all these. Yes, the parking question we have, yes, we are providing 26 parking spaces.
Okay. Now, I see up front, you have spaces reserved for visitor parking. That, is that part of the 26?
Yes. I think everything we have is based on what we are providing, so part of the calculations for the whole project is based on you need to have so many per, and that's what we followed. We followed the Apache Junction guidelines.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
This is going to be a gated community now?
Not sure. We're able to put the gate up there, just because the way the entry works and what we have up front, and I think there's a space limited to what we're trying to do, but we are trying to beautify with the landscape and things like that to make sure that it has very appealing up front, you know, curb appeal up front.
Well, I was just thinking for the security aspect, since we are getting reports that it was probably, you know, with the crime and stuff, that would help reduce that kind of...
Sure. We'll look into access, but I think based on what we have, and there's certain things within the code, like you see there's a visibility triangle and some of the planning requirements, I think we can try to see it and maybe work to see if we're able to do that. But I think we'll work out the details in terms of the entry and exit.
Because I thought when I read the preliminary on it, it said it was going to be gated.
It did say it was going to be gated, yeah, somewhere. Somewhere in the narrative talks about it being gated.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll work with the department to see, because I know fire has their own requirements in terms of getting in and out of gated communities, so.
Right.
But on the site plan, we did not show it. Just to be clear, yeah.
That's why I was asking about it.
Right, yeah, exactly. Is something going to be done about the sign? Will that be changed or upgraded?
We'll upgrade, and we'll get permits from, you know, from the city to make sure, yeah.
Looks very dated, so, yes, okay.
Well, I think Sridhar's, the ownership wants to not only upgrade the area, but make it better appealing, and I think a lot of these issues that have come up are just due to the age and lack of maintenance. And what Sridhar was mentioning earlier was about, let's take the, you know, let's take the area, let's make it better. And then, as you can see in the site plan, you know, we're not making all, when you hear multifamily, you just hear these massive buildings, and we didn't do that. We actually created small clusters, so it looks more homely. And you can clearly see in the site plan, it's just you've got two units, two units, and we created separation to just make it feel that way. And so it's not just like one giant building to kind of block views and things like that. So we had that in mind to make sure that when we did, and then, the driveway as well, we created an open area in the center, so it didn't feel all clustered in one area. So hence the, sort of, the spreading out of where it is now. And also, you know, we kept the existing, part of the requirements was to have, you know, a walkway through, so we took out all the front areas that are there. So there's going to be some work during construction once we start that. So right now, you have these little patios in front, which just, I think, has just different vibes. So once we do it, it'll get renovated and it'll all look nicer and uniform, because it'll be stupid for us to do something in the back and keep the front, you know, as is, yeah.
Good. Good. Any more questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing on this case. Members of the public have the opportunity to speak on this matter. I want to make a clear, statements from the public must be related to this case and no other issue. So if there are those who wish to speak, when you're recognized by the chair, please come down to the podium, state your name and address for the record, then present your statement. Please make certain to speak into the microphone, and you have a five-minute time limit for each speaker. So do we have someone willing to, yes, sir? Please come on down.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Gildan Beston. I live at 560 North Valley Drive, a neighbor directly to the north. I have a lot of concerns. North Valley Drive is a speed zone as it is now. There's no speed limit signs on that road whatsoever. And if you add 13 to 26 more vehicles into the mix, it's not a good thing at all. It's a nice little neighborhood, but they need, well, for one thing, they need speed limit signs, because there's people going through their 4550, because there's no stop signs on the cross. It goes all the way from Superstition all the way to Main, and it's a drag race through there. That's one concern. The other concern I wanted to address that was misnomered by gentlemen over here, the two sheds that I have on the south side of my property, on the north side of this property that he's planning, have a letter of non-compliance. They've been there long before Apache Junction had any zoning, and they're not going to move. There's plenty of room for a block wall to go behind them, and like I say, I have a letter of non-compliance for those two sheds. And they've been there since I've been on the property, and I've been there 21 years. Well, they were there clear back in the late 70s, I believe, from the information I have. The other thing I'd like to know is, is this going to also be government-subsidized housing or not? If it's government-subsidized housing, there's a lot of single-parent families that'll be in there, and they have a tendency not to discipline their children. We've had a lot of problem over there over the years. I've been there 21 years, and kids running amok out there and throwing, well, I had a lot of them throw eggs at my property and trash over just a four-foot chain-link fence, but they seem to think that that's okay to do that kind of stuff, because they have no discipline. I'd want to be guaranteed that this is not going to be subsidized government housing. The other issue would be, like I say, the traffic situation is not really good on Valley Drive. I'd like to see, you know, everything kind of stay in a neighborhood. I moved out here because I've got an acre land. I thought I'd have, you know, a neighbor on each side, and it'd be a nice, comfortable place to live. And the density is fine just the way it is. If they're not going to have a manager provided on the site that we can bring problems to, it just makes it ludicrous. You can't do anything. And I'd like the commissioners to figure out how many times the police have been called to it over the last five, 10 years, the way it is right now, and see if there's, you know, and some kind of thing that's going to multiply by 50 or 60% if this does happen. It's a nice community. It's a cowboy town. We don't do things normally the way other big cities do, and that's why we move here. And we'd like to see it stay a small, tight community and not have a slumroll considered right in the middle of town. And I'd like the commissioners to figure out how many times the police have been called to it over the last five, ten years, the way it is right now. And see if there's, you know, and some kind of thing that's gonna multiply by fifty or sixty percent, if this does happen. It's a nice community, it's a cowboy town, we, we don't do things normally the way other big cities do, and that's why we move here. And we'd like to see it stay a small, tight community and not have a slumroll considered right in the middle of town. Whoops, pardon me. I can't think of anything else I have right now. I'd welcome a block wall if they do decide they're gonna go through with this. I'd like to see it eight foot, just to keep riff and raft from getting over the fence and onto my property. Are they gonna allow pets over there? I think, you know, there's nothing you can do about that, but it creates a disturbance in the neighborhood, which we have a pretty quiet situation now. That's all I have to say, thank you for your time, Chair.
Right, thank you, thank you. And again, we're not, we really aren't permitted to give a response to this. We will take this information, and if we need, we wish to, we will ask the staff to become involved. Yes, ma'am, please come on down.
Terry Kreidler, I live at four-eight-nine North Gold, I live catty corner from this property. Over the years, really haven't had, I, on my side of the fence, have not had too many issues. They've had a couple trailers back there, could've been the previous owner, I don't know, but they had a couple trailers back there that stayed longer than they were supposed to, running generators and stuff, but those were taken care of. I'm kind of disappointed that the city is saying that they don't back up what's in their statutes or what's their boilerplate stuff. If they say you missed your opportunity and you have to start over, then the city should follow through on what they say. If there's consequences to actions, there should be consequences. Also, the easement, I know that Rudy said it's whatever. When we bought our property, we were told it's public easement. It's a utility easement for the utility people to come back there. We purposely leave it open so that the utility people can get back there. And I, apparently, it stops at the end of my property, because nobody else down the road has it. But from my property all the way to Cactus Rin is a utility easement. It should be continued to be a utility easement to the end of the road, because how else are they supposed to get in there? Because they can enter from Cactus Rin to get into, to read the meters. I think that's all I have. That's, I mean, I, I think it would be fine to have, you know, a nice place, but to circumvent their own rules, the city is not doing what they're, say they're going to do, which is kind of disappointing.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to make comment on this case? Please come on, come on down.
Dawn Collins, five-oh-six North Valley, I'm directly south. We did have a concern about mailboxes. That's gonna be a lot of mailboxes, and right now, everybody has to cross the street to get their mail. So, I don't know if the post office will allow a different type of mailbox than going across the street, because it's a rural route. And the utilities, yeah, well, they have to go behind my wood fence to get to the utility, so they always go down through the apartments and on the corner behind my fence. I don't know, I'd have to build a gate or something for them to get through, but, you know. Also, I think it looks like a big parking lot, all asphalt, so, not really sure I liked all that, but it looks like, to me, it looks like a few too many units, maybe. You know, it looks like a nice plan, but I'm not sure how I like it next door to me, and I'm just a single person, so, I'm a little old lady, a little scared, but, okay, thanks.
Thank you. I don't, Larry, I don't know with, regarding the post office and the mail delivery, I don't know if that's something that we can look into. It does seem, if they're gonna have thirteen mailboxes, that seem like that could be a little, is that?
Well, I think they would just have one rack with thirteen, yeah. Now, what, what side of the street that's on, I don't know. We have a lot of places where they only deliver mail on one side of the street, so, just for convenience. So, what, for this one, we could check with Phil, is it a postmaster? We can check with the postmaster, but can't get an answer for the folks tonight, but we can see how that would work. My guess is, having a bunch of people crossing the street all the time to check their mail, they'll probably, my guess is they'll probably wanna put something in closer, you know, to the units, but we can check with the postmaster.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, one last call, is there anyone else that wishes to make comment? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Teddy Richardson, and I live right across the street from the apartments. My concern is, before, when it was property managed and not the person on site, we had a lot of problems. We had people coming from the apartments, breaking into our houses. We had a lot of, we have a lot of traffic on the street as it is because of the bank. And now, he wants to build apartments, and he's talking about a playground, which I don't understand, because there's no kids there, except there's teenagers. When Gene lived there and he owned the apartments, we had no problems whatsoever, none. As Gil said, when there's not somebody on property, you have more problems. Two weeks ago, there were teenagers got dropped off in front of the apartments. I was outside working on my yard. They didn't belong there, they didn't live there, but they were telling, one of the residents came out and told them they had to leave, and they said they lived there. And then, they tried to say they lived in my house, there's no children in my house. And in the meantime, they stayed hanging around, throwing bricks from the back of the property around, before they finally decided to leave. Two ga, two days ago, the police were there, I don't know what for. Again, I was outside, and the police were there. I have no idea what for, but it's a concern, it's a big concern. We don't like the idea of more apartments. I don't have a problem with fixing the place up, I don't have a problem with parking or laundry or anything like that, but we really don't want more people. It's more problems, we don't like that, and that's what I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else, last call? If not, the public hearing is now closed. Now, I'll give the opportunity for discussion amongst commissioners. Any thoughts, anything you want to share before we consider a motion? Commissioner Mark?
Sorry. In listening to folks, it appears to me, number one, Public Works needs to be notified about the fact there are no speed limits on that street, that's first and foremost. That has nothing to do with the apartment owner, it just has to do with the, the fact that those signs need to be put up. And it seems to me that the last time I talked to anybody who rented an apartment, they had to go through a background check. I mean, they, they couldn't just plump, plump their money down like we used to. They had to go through checks before they could actually rent. So, I would presume that that's something that may, yes, thank you, I, I thought that was the case, I wasn't positive. So, that should help, also, a gate would help that situation. If that property were gated, the teenagers of whom she's speaking, she says no, but it seems to me that if they start jumping the gate, that's the point where somebody better call the PD and get them out there. You don't just stand around and watch kids throw bricks, you call the PD, you know, do something about it. So, some of the problems that they're talking about, like the speeding on the street, I live on a small street like that, I have lived there for fifty years, so I understand. And it has become a speedway, and I've certainly tried very hard to do something about it, and perhaps it will work, perhaps it won't, but, you know, you've got to, you've got to deal with these things. You can't just sit back and say it's happening and not try to do something about it, I think. So, it seems to me that most of the problems that have been discussed are problems that can be taken care of. That is the way I see it at this point. The utility easement bothers me, I'm not sure what that is, I'm, I'm not sure I totally understand that. I know there's a partial alley there, but it doesn't go beyond that, is that what you're saying, Terry? Okay, I, I just saw the one coming down from Cactus Rin, I didn't look at the other end, obviously.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Those are my comments.
I think we need to figure out what's going on with these utility easements, because obviously, the utilities are doing something going back there, and people are being told different things, and.
Sounds like it, yeah.
And obviously, they gotta get back there somehow to read all these meters, and how are they gonna do it in the future if they put up this wall? What is, does each property owner then have to provide their own access, how is that gonna be?
I don't know, because I, I look at areas like Apache Villa and areas like that, where they also have either partial alleyways or no alleyway at all. They're, they're just center line, they can build their property to the center line, and many people have done it, and there is no access at all in the back. Hasn't been for many, many, many years, so.
And then, my other thing is, the narrative, this was presented as a new gated community.
The gate part, yeah, the gate part's important.
Yeah, that's very important to me as part of this, especially the letter that I read, the two letters with the, the crime, plus with the voices from the community that we're getting tonight. I think that's critical, that that goes up as part of this.
Mailboxes, too, that's a good question.
Which, yeah, but we don't have control over that, that's the federal government and the postmaster.
Still a good question.
It is, but the post office is the post office.
You think?
Yeah, my, my parents worked for the post office, we have no control over the post office, I know that. I'm sure they can put up a gang box, whether it's gonna be on the other side or something, but.
All the other mailboxes are on the other side.
It's probably gonna be a gang box on the other side, would be my guess.
A gang box?
Yeah, that's where they, thirteen boxes in one, or whatever.
They're called MBUs, multiple box units.
Yeah, okay, is that the new term?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. The new political correct term?
MBUs has been around for.
Isn't that like the DUP and the thing we've been beating?
I guess from my postal slang, it's the gang box to me still.
Okay, all right, Chairman?
Yeah, I, I guess this would be more for Joel. On the original zoning clause, it's on the back side of these two pages. Under item one, says upon rezoning of the property, the site shall be developed in accordance with the submitted plan, site plan, within two years of the rezoning approval, where the zoning may be subject to reversion by legislative action of, of Apache Junction City Council. Is the key word "may" versus "shall" in effect here?
Yes, Commissioner Cross. The law used to be that the council could just come in and say, okay, you didn't do what you're supposed to do, we're just gonna cancel your zoning. Well, there was challenges to that. What, and then what happened was Proposition two-oh-seven came in play in two thousand and seven, which says that's a taking if you do that. So, because of those laws, the law had to be changed, so that it's not automatic. The council, the city council cannot just say, hey, you, it's two years and one day, you didn't do what you're supposed to do, so you're done. You don't have that zoning anymore. So, now, what has to happen is, just like a regular zoning procedure, just like we're having today, public hearing, a council may say, okay, we're going, we're gonna revert that rezoning, so we're gonna give you notice that we're gonna have a hearing on it. So, it's discretionary, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Chairman? Thank you, yes, Commissioner.
Let me go back on the history on this a little bit, because I'm confused. Okay, this is currently zoned RM one, which would allow up to thirteen units. When it was originally, when it, when it originally came into the zoning and when we did this action in, what, two thousand and ten or something like that, that made it a PD, a planned development for expansion if they wanted to go beyond six. I, I'm confused about what was permitted in that original zoning of RM one.
RM, RM one is our lowest-intensity multifamily zoning district. And, and typically, I don't have the zoning ordinance in front of me, but basically allows up to thirteen dwelling units per acre.
Right.
This property is an acre property. It had previously been zoned residential, and then when we adopted our new zoning maps, I think it went to RS twenty, which is a medium-density, single-family zone. And when the general plan stuff was going on, once again, that's when the, the previous property owners approached the council about a corrective rezoning. And that's when it went to RM one PD. It's not a, a straight RM one, where you can do anything allowed under the RM one zone, as long as you meet the standards. It was planned development to protect, number one, to get some improvements out of the property, but also to have the, any applicant come back with a proposal to change what was basically always there and made, made conforming by the RM one PD zone. RM one PD only approved what was there, expansion required a plan amendment. That's why we're seeing it tonight, yes, thank you.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Cross.
Is it, is it Megan?
Morgan.
Morgan, sorry, made the same mistake. So, Morgan, because I'm not allowed to ask the developer, I'll ask you. Do they fully intend to go through with this development, or are they flipping the property?
Sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
It says, does the applicant intend to do, go through with the building of this property, or are they reaching out to get a zoning upgrade, per se, so that they can flip the property for somebody else to do the work?
Actually, they originally scaled down their original proposal for more units, so they didn't have to change the zoning.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think that is an appropriate question, question for the applicant. I think you can ask the applicant.
I can?
Yes.
So, then if we do that, then we need to reopen the public hearing, yes?
Yes, if, if you reopen the public hearing. But I think that is a question that should be, that's a very good question, and that question has been asked of applicants before. So, I think you can ask that.
All right, then I will, then I will, and open up the public hearing again, which gives the opportunity for the applicant to speak, also the opportunity for residents and neighbors to speak. So, Sri that, if you would like to make comment?
Sure. So, I intend to develop the property, I'm not flipping it and trying to make some quick buck.
Okay.
I have another question, since we're gonna reopen it.
Reopen.
Do you plan on using this as Section Eight housing?
No. So, there is one tenant who is under Section Eight, she has been there for ten years. She has asked me not to move her out, so I'm gonna retain her, but we are not doing any more Section Eights.
Okay.
And, and will, you will, or let me back that up. What kind of background checks will you be doing for your, for your applicants?
So, I have a property management company, which follows different checks, I mean, credit history, criminal history, and all the background checks, and vets the tenants before they, and then, if, if everything meets the criteria, then they go forward, they take my approval and move forward.
Mr. Chair, if I can interrupt you. About twenty-three years ago, I, I started here, and I ripped off, I'm a thief, I ripped off something called the Crime-Free Housing Program. And I took it from Mesa, and I, and when they implemented it here. And that is a program that can be used, which the police department is involved in, and it includes all types of law enforcement-related items with tenants. So, maybe, the instruction tonight would also be to look into that program to see if there's be elements of that. there's be elements of that program that could be applied to this property if, if you so desire. It's usually for problem properties that in the past were horrible. This is a new development, part of it is. However, there might be elements of that that will assist, um, any kind of appearance of criminal activity. So I would suggest that, that you direct that to staff, they contact the police and maybe next time someone, or, or maybe the police department can, can advise on that.
Again, it's called Crime Free Housing?
The Crime Free Housing Program, correct.
Okay, all right. Sounds very legit to me. Um, okay, uh, other questions for the applicant? I, I guess I had one last one, obviously with the, the neighbors that were expressing concern about uh, some of the issues with not crime, but just the potential for crime or, or, you know, challenges with living next door. Um, I would trust that as the owner, you would, you would take seriously any concerns or any incidents that might occur where if, uh, tenants there in your, in your, in your property were to be involved, you'd take seriously anything to, to resolve or, or prevent that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, oh, yeah.
Are you managing it or is there going to be a property management company?
Property management company.
And do you provide that to all your neighbors, the numbers and contacts?
Yeah, I've given them the, I mean, as part of this, um, the, the materials that I distributed, it had the information.
And then could you make sure they all have it after this meeting as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Sridhar. Okay, um, now I'm reopening up to the public, so yes, sir, if you'd like to come and
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clear up one, uh, point about the, uh,
I guess, could we have your name and address again, please, sir?
Okay, Gildan Beston, 560 North Valley Drive. I just live on the north side of this development.
Thank you.
There is a, uh, right away through there, it's fifteen and a half foot. There are also utility poles that have to be accessed that are on the property lines, the north property line and the south property line. And they have to be able to get trucks in there for the phone company, cable TV, uh, especially SRP, they have to bring trucks in there, bucket trucks, post, uh, management equipment, so they can change poles and that. And so they have to have access to that area. And it has to be at least fifteen and a half feet with a turning access to get in there. Because they can't come in from either end, because there's a wash on my property which curtails that. But they have to be able to get to those poles. And, uh, that should be something that's noted when they're figuring out how many buildings they can put in there. They got to have the turning radius, which should be checked out with SRP, so they have access to those poles. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If anyone else wishes to speak? All right, hearing none. I will close the public hearing. And then any more, any other conversation, any other, uh, any other thoughts, observations from, from the commission? Okay, uh, this is, uh, asking for consideration from the commission, so, um, do I hear a motion on case P dash 21 dash 6 dash PZ?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could, first, you know, I've heard some concerns tonight. I don't know if you want to just, if you're going to go through with the zoning vote, but maybe you do want to continue to get some answers. You certainly have that option.
Yeah.
And if you do that, you can certainly do that.
Um, I was, yeah, I was actually kind of contemplating whether or not there's enough here that we could ask for more. So, uh,
I would like to at least get an answer on the gate and I'd like to get some more clarification on the utility access. Um, and then I would, I would like to get some answers possibly on the police reports and stuff too. Because if we can't put up a gate, at least find out, you know, how many calls have we had in the last year or so? Where if we can't put up a gate, does it warrant a gate?
Okay, so then, uh, I will, do I have a motion on this case to continue it? And if so, then we need to have a date certain for the next, the next hearing, so, yes. Commissioner Barker?
I move that case P dash 21 dash 6 dash PC, PZ, excuse me, be continued to June 8th.
Okay, that's, all right. I have a motion to hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Roll call, Rudy?
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Begum?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantwell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hansi?
Yes.
Chairman Heck?
Yes.
The motion is to continue to June 8th. Morgan, what date was this scheduled for council? So, okay, so.
It gives us
June 15th, okay.
It still gives us time.
We'll bring it back to you the week before the council hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, very good. Thank you, Wall. All right, um, next on the agenda is old business. We do have one item. Uh, it's case, it's forever showing itself up here, A, case AM dash 4 dash 20. That's presentation and discussion of case, of that case, proposed changes to Apache Junction City Code, regarding cargo containers and accessory structures, so.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, the last, Larry Kirch, Director of Development Services, the last, uh, direction that we received was that we should plow forward, we should try to combine the accessory structured part of the zoning code with the cargo container part of the code. So what you have before you is a draft, um, it's probably going to need some amendments, which we'll, we'll go through tonight. So the, uh, accessory structures are in 1 dash 6 dash 5. That's a whole section of the code. Cargo containers are in 1 dash 6 dash
Eight.
Eight. Eight. Um, I thought they were under, uh, where they have all those other, uh, ones, but they're not. So this is just, so what we've tried to do is combine the two, I guess the direction was a cargo container is a form of an accessory structure, so let's try to regulate them as if they were an accessory structure, so that in the spirit of that, that's how this is drafted. So, the, I'm just going to go through this and hopefully it's not too painful. But essentially, the code has tables, uh, 5-2, 5-4, they deal with, uh, the allowed uses, types of uses within each zoning district and then the setback requirements for primary buildings, you know, the houses, and then setbacks for accessory structures. So that, what I tried to do here was consolidate, the, the items in the cargo containers had separate sections for height, maximum number, et cetera. So I'm just referencing that, that's really what the first paragraph does. If you want to know what the setbacks are, go to those tables. Okay, then we have these general, so the first part of this, A through, um, H, A through H are just kind of the general regulations that would apply to all accessory structures. So right now, we allow someone to have a cargo container or, um, a shed, something that they're, they, they put up a building, so then they can go build their house and they want to securely store their tools. So paragraph B, uh, paragraph, uh, subparagraph 1 essentially allows you to have an accessory building prior to the construction of the main house while you're building your house. Okay, that's what that does. Section 2 did not change, that's already there. It simply, um, allows existing structures to continue. So a lot of times this would happen, say you had two and a half acres and you wanted to split it into two acre and a quarter lots. And so you had a two and a half acre lot, you had a house on the north side and a shed on the south side. Now you do a land division. And now the sheds all by its lonesome. That's what this paragraph 2 does, is allows that existing shed that was there to be there by itself. So that's, that's that. Utility connections, um, we allow utility connections, essentially usually electric, to garden sheds, you know. Uh, I think historically it's been a 15 amp circuit if you want to recharge your portable drill, things like that. We, we have made some changes in other parts of the code in working with Dave Zellner, the building official, that you could have two 20 amp circuits. So again, not big enough for an air conditioner. Um, window unit, maybe, I don't know, 20 amp circuit, that might draw a lot, but, uh, that's what that's all about. So accessory structures under 320 can have no more than two 20 amp circuits. If you're over that, again, we get 5,000 square foot sheds. So if you have a 5,000 square foot sheds, we have some with, uh, three phase and, uh, big stuff going on. So the next part of that paragraph says if you're over 320, and 320, by the way, is an 8 by 40 cargo container. So we have defined, uh, later on, you'll see a cargo container is essentially an overseas shipping container. In my research, a domestic shipping container that doesn't go on a boat can be up to 45 feet long and maybe 53. So we have limited our cargo containers to really the international overseas shipping container size that's an 8 by 40. So that's what paragraph C does. Um, this is, we're still in discussions on this right now. We require any accessory building to be six feet from another accessory building. That's been in the zoning code for a long time. The building code doesn't really address it much, but it really is, if you are storing stuff in the accessory building, we want to keep them six feet apart. Now you can use, uh, um, building materials that might allow them to be closer. But, so we're still toying, should we allow it closer if you have cement board siding on the outside of your shed, for example? Or you have, um, um, sheet rock on the inside. You have a, a one hour, two hour wall on the inside of the building. So when your gas can goes up, your house isn't going up with it. That's why we have some separation, but we're, um, working with Dave Zellner to figure out, is this okay? Uh, paragraph E, uh, this one we may come back to. I think in, I think the idea was we would take it out of the accessory building standards, but we do have separate regulations just for RV and mobile home parks. So we could have this section, we have allowed historically, if you have, it's like one gimme. So you get one shed, you can kind of put it wherever you want, even though it doesn't make sense. We've allowed you to put a, uh, storage building in the setback, so the firefighter can't get through. But we've allowed it. That's really what that does. We're not striking it for that reason, but I think our idea was we have an RV section of the code as well. So that's, we're going to deal with there. So E is this new shade structure. It's really in the building code right now, so during the adoption of the 2018 building codes, there was an interest from the horse community to allow a shade structure up to 200 square feet without a permit. So this essentially says you can have an open air, but it could be any, it could be a pergola. It doesn't have to be a shade structure for, uh, an animal, but, um, you can have an unenclosed shade structure. Again, the red is for the six feet, so again, maybe we allow them, uh, closer than that. Um, I don't blame you, Sidney. The, uh, so this basically parrots, mirrors, whatever you want to say, the language that we've added to the building code in chapter seven that allows you. So we thought if it's in the building code, let's make an allowance for it in the zoning code.
All right, Larry, if I may, just ask a quick question on that. So a shade structure, we are also considering an accessory structure?
If it's, if it's less than 200 square feet, would not need a permit. If it's over 200 square feet, it needs a permit. So we allow you a shade structure up to 200 square feet. No permit.
How does that work with a pergola off the back of a patio?
If it's attached to the house, then it's not an independent structure. You need a permit for that.
I'm saying, just as a, you know, next to the pool, off the side of the patio, where the barbecue grill is and so on and so forth, but in a lot of backyards, smaller residential lots, that would be definitely closer than six feet to the house in a lot of circumstances.
Well, we, right now, don't allow them closer than six feet. So right now, any structure over 120 is supposed to get a permit.
Okay.
So now we're saying if it's up to 200, you don't need a permit. And we're still looking at, is this six feet still relevant?
Yeah.
What if it's a, a patio that's not attached to the house? Because like some of the mobiles, manufactured homes, you're not technically supposed to attach them to the house?
We allow those to be not attached to the house within, functionally, they are essentially.
But they're not technically attached, but.
But a lot of them are, Arizona rooms, we have a lot of those structures, they are attached.
But if, let's say the homeowner does it correctly and they don't attach it and there's like an inch gap.
Then it's still, if it's over 120 square feet, it needs a permit, so it's not flying down the road. What?
But it's not.
Not what?
Over 120 square feet.
Well
And it's not technically attached.
Then it doesn't need a permit. And we don't know about it. There's a lot of stuff we don't know about, as I mentioned earlier. It's under 120 square feet, we don't know about it. But typically, a carport, a shade structure that's 8 by 40, that's going to need a permit, whether it's attached or not attached.
And then, do you count that as an, because later on, you count total number of structures? Does that count as one of their total number?
This accessory, if it doesn't need a permit, that's, we're going to have to get into that because right now we have no limit. You can have 100 things in your backyard. I'm, I don't have it perfect, I'm going to guarantee you.
No, I'm saying
I'm trying to come up with, how many should you have? And so is this unenclosed shade structure, if it's un, if it doesn't need a permit, it's still, it's still a number.
Let's say I put up a patio, 200 square foot.
Uh huh.
And I got to get a permit. Does that count as an accessory?
If it, I would attach it to your house, then it's part of your house. I would not leave that one inch gap. If it's attached to the house, it's not an accessory structure.
When you're not technically supposed to, because then that's something
If you have engineering, I think you can. If you have engineering, you can attach it to your house.
But I know some of the manufacturers of manufactured homes say you're not supposed to. And that can affect your warranties on your manufactured home.
Then yes, we would count it towards that unless you come up with another solution.
Because later on, you put a limit, I think of four.
Depending on your lot size, yeah.
Yeah, anything over 20,000, I believe it was.
But most of the shade structures I
Is that limit new?
Yeah, we have no limit right now.
Okay, so we can strike that four limit?
No, I think you should make it two instead of four.
I'm just saying we can.
Right now, we have no limit. You guys can debate how many shade, how many sheds should you have in your backyard? Right now, we have no limit. And maybe you want to limit it based on your lot size.
Right, but we could say that patios and that type of stuff.
You could come up with some exemption if you want to say that a unenclosed patio doesn't count for one of your accessory structures. It's up to you.
I'm just trying to get your interpretation as what you're counting as structures right now.
Yes.
So I know how to
Structure is anything over, anything over 120 that needs a permit's a structure.
So that's why I'm trying to understand this for later.
And I'm here to tell you that we allow you to attach it to anything with engineering.
Um, if I can ask one last question?
No, you're going to, you're going to have more, I know.
Okay, well
Because I'll hold you to that last.
Regarding that shade structure issue, so, and you had mentioned, the equine, you know, horse owner and stuff. So something like, you know, stables, shaded stables or mare motels and stuff, will they, will they count as accessory structures?
Yeah, they do now.
They do, oh, they do now?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
And they have to have setbacks and, yeah. Yeah, we require permits. If it's less than 120, it does not need a permit. If it's 121, we require a permit. This is an open air shade structure, no sides. They'll all have sides a week later, but right now, no sides. After the inspector leaves, we know what happens.
Okay.
So, yeah, because some of those are engineered buildings, you know, a lot of those mare motels are all engineered buildings. So what I did here with F, the, the current F through I is basically say, go see the table. I was just trying to clear the whole thing up that you don't, it kept referencing you back to the same table. Every single paragraph references you back to Every single paragraph references you back to the same table, so I think people can read. Okay, so this one is generally speaking, if you're going to do an accessory structure and it's visible from the adjacent property, then again, treating everything the same. Right now, an accessory structure does not need vegetation around it. So, but we do for cargo containers. And people don't seem to have a problem putting some vegetation and screening around these cargo containers. So treating everything the same, if you put up an accessory structure, you should have plantings. Again, I think there's some nuance here. If there's a brick wall and you can't, it doesn't make sense to put a bunch of plants around something that your neighbor can't see. So if it's visible to the adjacent property, it should be screened somehow. That's what that paragraph does. Then everybody asks us, well, what plants should we use? So rather than just hand them a list that's somewhere, we just said, here's the list that's in the code. That's what that table does. So this is the list that we give to folks who are currently screening their cargo containers.
Larry? Are you suggesting that we're putting plants around mare motels and shade structure for horses?
Yeah.
If you can see.
The way it's written, that's how it appears.
Yep.
Yep.
That's impossible.
I'm just telling you, you guys told me to take apples and oranges and make it.
A fruit salad.
A fruit salad.
That's not making it a fruit salad, that's making it an apple.
No, 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 for this potato salad.
Potato salad. So that's the attempt to, if your neighbor can see it, you got to try to hide it. If there's a block wall, or maybe there's, never mind, I was going to say Oleander screening the mare motel. But I didn't, I didn't want to do that.
Go for it. I was bringing that one.
That's not on the list.
Don't go down there, man.
That's not on the list.
That's a dark alley.
Okay. Then essentially all accessory structures need to be anchoring. I think it's kind of a given anyway, but accessory structures need to be anchored in some way. And then this is, we run into all the time, that folks put these things in the right of way. They put them in these FPEs, they put them in, you know, 15 and a half foot easements, you know, things like that. So essentially says you can't put these things in landscape setbacks or in any private easement. Okay, so now this is where I think it needs a lot more work as I was proofreading this. But essentially this, this could be characterized as the no more red barn provision. So everybody says, why is there a red barn on Idaho Road? Well, because it's zoned RSGR. This would essentially say you have to now buy siding that is earth tone. Now what I'm missing from that, I think I need to have C and D. So that we're now in the next section. This basically says, and I have to make a change here, it should say RSGR, RS 54 and RS 54M. So that needs to go in there. But what I'm missing up above, and this is just the RSGR. We need some language in there. These two paragraphs would, although D would be different. We wouldn't have the 10,000, 20,000, et cetera. But I think what we have today is you can have an RSGR 18 by 40. We generally let people have two eight by twenties as long as they're put together somehow. So what's missing right now in the RSGR is probably this, this language here at a minimum needs to be in the RSGR that you get one, it can be eight by 40.
Let me go back to the earth tone real quickly. Now that is not currently a requirement for primary residence, residences?
We don't, no. In a subdivision, yeah, we review all the paint and the colors and all that. But if you build a house on an acre and a quarter or on a 20,000 square foot lot, the city has no regulations on what color your house can be.
So you could paint your, your main house purple with pink polka dots, but then if an accessory building would have to be earth tone?
Yes.
They go together well.
Yes, I know. It's my favorite example.
Okay, so.
Like there's, Larry, there's a.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Barker has.
I, I just have an editorial note. I love the overseas double E.
No, it's SE.
Oh, did I misspell it throughout?
Paragraph, no, just once, and that was what was fascinating to me.
I spelled it right here, right?
Well, in the first overseas in paragraph D, you spelled it wrong. In the second overseas, you spelled it correct.
Yeah, I thought I caught that, but.
I loved it, I thought that was fun.
Okay. So again, coming back, what, and I'll, I'll talk about it now. We had a case, paragraph C basically says if you have a cargo container, we've given you a permit for a cargo container and now you need an emergency one. You can't have one because you already have a cargo container. Our cargo, our ordinance says you can have one cargo container and it doesn't really specify. So paragraph C was intended to say, okay, I have a cargo container and now I got an emergency. Can I have a second one? And that you would have a limited basis for an emergency cargo container because you're remodeling your house, you had a fire, you had a flood, whatever. So that again, I want to move both, a version of this up there. So these essentially, this is currently the city code requires any accessory structure over 120 square feet to have 75% of its exterior has to have some sort of cladding other than metal. So this will be the fun one, because if I have, if I'm zoned RS seven and I want a cargo container, I can't just have a metal cargo container anymore. I got to treat it like an accessory structure, because guess what? A cargo container is like any other accessory structure. So now 75% of the cargo container has to have stucco, T 111, you name it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner Barker again, yes.
I'm sorry. It would appear to me earlier on, you say that if it's visible, you have to have plantings around it. It would appear to me that the same should apply to the exterior finish. If it's visible, it would need an exterior finish. But if it's in your backyard with a six, eight foot wall around it, I mean, that's ridiculous.
So residential only allows a six foot fence. This is going to be eight feet, so two feet above. So only the top two feet?
You could do the top two feet, wherever it's visible.
So years ago, the city was getting metal sheds everywhere, right? And the city said, no more metal sheds. You know, this isn't Petticoat Junction, it's Apache Junction. We want to dress up the city. The city, fathers and mothers said, you know what? None of these buildings that you would see on RSGR, the metal buildings, we don't want those in the city proper, so to speak. That's what this language does. So again, in the spirit of saying a cargo container should be treated like any other accessory structure, that's what I did. You can debate it all night long.
I agree with it.
And that's, so you went through C, now D gets back to some, again, this is only in the smaller lots. So again, I got to go back and fix this, but there's nothing in the RSGR. So if I'm zoned RSGR, I can have metal, it's just got to be earth tone. So the decorative siding is only for zoning really other than RSGR.
So what happened to consistency?
Pardon me?
You were saying you wanted to be consistent.
Right now we have, allow metal sided buildings in RSGR. So if you want to have a metal sided cargo container, as long as it's earth tone, you can have it. If you're RSGR. If you're RS seven, RS 10, RS 20, you have to have the 75% rule. So I'm applying that 75% rule to those RS seven, RS 10, et cetera.
Sorry.
Hey, hey, hey.
I can't turn it off, I've got the volume down gone and it's braiding.
You're disrupting this meeting.
It's braiding, doing his disruption.
So now we get back to Commissioner Hansi's question is, okay, so you're going to allow, right now, no limit on accessory structures, what should it be? This is what I threw out there. So if you have a quarter acre lot, if you will, 10,000 square feet, you can have two. They can be. What I didn't do was put in what, I mean, basically we have a lot coverage ratio. So you're somewhat limited by your lot coverage ratio, which is generally 40 to 50% in some of these zoning districts. So you can have a shed that's, you know, 600 square feet. You're going to have a shed that's 120, that's your two. You could have a cargo container. Now what I need to do is add to this, the in those smaller lots, what I didn't put in here and what I should have put in here was that an eight by 40 is a pretty good sized cargo container if you got a 7,000 square foot lot. So maybe we do the eight by 20. So if you're less than 20,000 square feet, it's eight by 20. If you're more than 20,000 square feet, then it's eight by 40. And maybe regardless of zoning, because we do have those RSGR lots that are only, you know, 20,000 square feet. We have some old lot splits that happened before the city was a city. So that's another consideration. So I think the maximum size in the smaller lot size zoning should be eight by 20. And then you get to a larger size, then you can have the full size cargo container.
Realistically, if you're having a lot that's less than 10,000 square feet, you're not going to be able to get an eight by 40 container in there.
They have cranes, I'm sure we can.
Yeah, but you still have to meet all the setbacks and everything too.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, you're probably not going to get an eight by 40 in there.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what the setbacks are all about too, is making sure you meet all that requirements.
So now.
And does.
This, go ahead, sir.
This section right here is only in the non-RSGR property.
Yes, but we also have this other section that deals with, this is the RS 54, RS 54M. We hardly have any land zoned RS 54M. It's kind of south of Broadway, just like a little tiny pocket, east of Tomahawk, I think. RS 54 is a whole square mile that is from Goldfield to Tomahawk, from Superstition to Lost Dutchman. So that area had some fairly difficult in the cargo container. So what you're not seeing is what I struck in the cargo container. If the, if the height of the wall was eight foot, this was your setback. If it was 10 foot, this was your setback. If it was 12 foot, this was your setback. That got convoluted. If it was over a certain size, you had to get your neighbor's permission. It all became, so we're just trying to simplify it. We don't, we've had maybe one request in the seven years I've been here to try to put a cargo container in the RS 54, I mean, an accessory structure in the RS 54 that had to meet those goofy side setbacks. So in this case, in the RS 54, we, this, that first section really deals with Quonset huts. You can't really have a Quonset hut, that's what A does, a metal Quonset hut in the RS 54. This one is really the cargo container thing. It's basically the pink polka dot cargo container section. I thought, I thought, Mr. Campbell, you'd like to. Oh, you, you, it didn't get. It didn't get past you, okay, all right. So this is, this is the language I struck. C, I see I'm losing my audience. C really replaces that C 123 where I was mentioning. So accessory structures, basically you have to have a 30 foot setback, that's what the RS 54 is. 20 foot side rear and interior on a corner lot. So basically we're allowing you to have your accessory structure have a 20 foot rear and side as opposed to these 30 foot. So we're really letting people put their accessory structure 10 foot closer to their rear lot line here.
Larry?
Yes, sir.
Kind of interject. Years ago, a large group of neighbors in the RS 54 district had a, a big squabble over this whole thing, which was, was the result of an individual wanting to put in a Quonset hut and turn it into a dog kennel. And the neighbors came out and drove saying, absolutely not. And so the city at that time talked about just banning all metal buildings in that zoning district. So the neighbors all got together and they signed petitions and whatnot. And that's not indicating that's not what they intended. They just wanted to not have Quonset hut type material. And they formed a committee and that committee with an arbitrator, sat down between the two opposing sides. And that's the language that they came up with to accommodate having metal buildings that, you know, a lot of, some of the neighbors just didn't want any metal buildings, period. Other neighbors showed through pictures and whatnot, that metal buildings could be made to look a lot nicer, look more like a, a home versus a metal building. And so that's where that language came into play. I think there would be a lot of individuals that would be upset that all that language got struck out of there.
Okay, so this is the Quonset hut. This says no Quonset huts.
Right.
Now, this language, again, you can delete it and just say no Quonset huts. But this basically says if you stucco your Quonset hut or you put T 111, you can have it. But maybe you don't want them. So that's what, so that Quonset hut language is still there. The other language basically says any metal sided, you can have metal sided buildings all you want. They just, depending on the height of the sidewall, how far they have to be setback.
And that's where some of the neighbors were talking. They didn't want a 15 foot walled metal barn per se, right up against the fence. You're allowing them to move that 15 foot tall or 20 foot tall building, another 10 feet closer to the property line, where this language was purposefully moving those taller buildings farther away from the property line.
So, so in the third one, eight foot wall, shall be allowed in.
So, you know, if you, if you decide to put your building, your, your metal building on the property line, you would respect the 10 foot rule there, but you could only have eight foot sides on your barn. But if you moved it all the way out to 30 feet, then you could have a metal sided barn up to 12 foot height in walls, if that's how I remember reading that.
So, so the way it's written, this, this would change to 20 feet. So this would, three would be more restrictive, right? So we would move it from 10 to 30, to 20.
Okay.
Two would basically be the same, 20. So really three, so this would, we would, we're making this more restrictive. This would be the same.
Okay.
This, if you want to keep something like this, then you keep it at 30 feet. If it's over 12 feet, then it's got to be 30 foot back. So I'm just, so maybe that's somewhere where we're making your metal sidewall more restrictive at 20 for number three. Two is basically what we're. Two is a wash and then three, we could keep it at 30 feet. It just, I'm just saying in seven years, Rudy, how, do you remember? I've been here seven, I don't even know how many applicants we've had.
We've had maybe half a dozen folks actually go through this cumbersome process to get petitions from their neighbors. A lot of times neighbors don't respond, what do we do in that case? A lot of people have asked about building RV garages which are taller than 15 feet. What do you do in that case? Except meet the building setbacks, the maximum building setbacks, which is 30 feet all the way around. So this code has not been used very often, but when it has been used, it's been a very difficult process to get through.
Well, I.
No, thanks for that background information. Rudy had it all, he knew it, but.
I know that a neighbor, in my neighborhood, went ahead and put a, a big RV storage building in. But it's also a barn, it's, but it's not metal, it's all stucco. It looks just like the house, other than it's another 10 feet taller than the house. So I think this was, you know, you could still have a, an RV covered storage or whatever in this zoning, but you would have to make it out of something other than metal the way this would be read, which is fine. I think most of the neighbors in that area just did not want all those Butler buildings per se.
And it had to do with the size of the building, because I think the other, the other thing RS 54 limits you to is a 2,000 square foot building. And this code also had the language in. And this code also had the language in there to allow detached accessory structures to go up to five thousand. But that...
You can go to the neighbor and go from two to five.
Right.
Yeah.
So, it was... It had to do with the height of metal walls, but also the square footage of the building itself.
Yeah. Okay.
So, today, you can put a metal-sided building in the RS fifty-four?
Yes.
Yeah. And, yeah, we weren't going to change that. But there wasn't... We wanted to use uniform language in this earth tone. That's why we were adding the earth tone, so everything, everybody... We're using that same definition throughout.
In... In writing that, does that also go for the roofs? The roof of the metal building, does it have to be painted?
We have never dealt with the...
Because what I've seen on a couple buildings that have been built is, you know, the sides are earth tone. And you drive down and the sun hits you just right in the morning and blinds live and crap out of you, because it's just a galvanized metal roof. It's not painted.
Yeah. Well, again, the door is wide open right now to make whatever changes you want.
It's Pandora's box. Let's keep going.
It's really what it is.
Okay, I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I...
Mr. Barker.
This is kind of going back, because I'm not touching cargo containers with a ten-foot pole, okay?
We tried not even to use the word in here.
If you have a backyard shed and your backyard shed is painted to match your house, and at least the top of it might be able to be seen from the roadway or by a neighbor, do you have to put plants around it?
Today?
Yeah.
No.
No, I mean with this.
Tomorrow, yes.
If the top of it can be seen...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that seems kind of silly to me if you've gone to the trouble to match your shed to your house and...
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I understand the reasoning behind making sheds look decent. I get it. But if a person has gone to the trouble to make that shed look decent by color coordinating it with their house, it would appear to me that plantings would be detrimental. It would take away from this coordination that this person has been trying to get. Just thought I'd throw that monkey wrench in.
No, and it's easier to do with a shed than a cargo container, is it not?
Oh, yes. I'm talking sheds. Like I said, I'm not touching a cargo container with a ten-foot pole.
Right. So, I don't know how we nuance it so that... Again, if there's a six-foot fence, if it's visible front... So, if you have a chain-link fence between you and your neighbor, and now you put in this thing, and it's got to be earth tone, got to match the house, and now if it's over one hundred and twenty square feet today, it has to have seventy-five percent, has to have something other than... So, whether you want the landscaping there or not, it was... I wasn't, you know, crafting the original cargo container language. That was, okay, if we're going to have them, you're going to landscape them. So, again, maybe you want to have language that says, again, I don't know how you treat them all the same. So, if you have a cargo container and you put seventy-five percent of it with that stuff, then, yeah, maybe you drop the landscaping.
Okay.
Because some of the pictures we've seen, these are Taj Mahal's we're getting. We're going to get Taj Mahal's. There're going to be windows. There're going to be offices. There're going to be cabanas for your pool. That... They're going to have wood siding that's going to be stained. That's kind of what we've been said. And again, maybe that's the criteria.
I don't know.
In... Yeah, that's the picture slideshow we saw. So, in RSGR, they can be metal. They just have to be earth tone. In any other zoning district, they have to have a cladding that matches the house. That's kind of what we're getting at. That's the big-picture thing. But if you want to get rid of the landscaping, because, you know, you don't need it... So, commercial, the major departure here is... We talked a little bit about it last time. Right now, there's no limit on the number of cargo containers you can have on a commercial property. They can only be used for the business that's there. So, you can't put one in on your business and have all your friends bring their stuff over, because that would be mini-storage, right? So, this one limits it. I did not put anything in here about seasonal use. Maybe we need some language about seasonal, where you're putting all your holiday stuff behind the store and now you use it and for, you know... Holiday season starts, though. Now, Christmas starts in August now or something, so I don't even know.
Larry?
So, anyway, so, we don't... We don't... Didn't deal with that. Yes.
Yeah. You bring up a great point, because if you Google Earth or Walmart, you'll see there's like four storage containers back there right now, although there is not. So, yeah, Walmart generally starts getting in their Christmas gifts and whatnot, probably in October.
And they have never gotten a permit. They never get a permit.
They probably didn't know they needed a permit.
When they... When they did their...
Well...
When they did their remodel, there were probably fifteen...
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Did they... Did they ever ask, seek a...
No.
No.
No. No, they got permits for the solar on the roof, and they got a permit for the remodel and all that stuff inside. But there were three cargo containers in town when this whole thing was written, and those three were exempt.
Yes.
And then, the...
Floodgates opened.
Correct. So, now, again, to... To go around and check all these commercial buildings for cargo containers, I think we've issued one since I've been here, one commercial. So, anyway, that's... So, these... Those are... That's the major thing here, is it's pretty much the same language throughout, is, you know, you can't put them in the easements. You can have... That's the major change here, is this, you can have one. So, again, if you want to add language for season... Or seasonal...
I think you should.
And then, it's a hundred dollars right now for every cargo container permit for one time only. So, I don't know if we have a seasonal thing that's twenty-five bucks for times ten. I have no idea. But when one season ends, another season now, it's the summer season. It's the...
Yeah, it is dog ro...
Yeah.
Well, what I've... What I've noticed in the past with Walmart, it's just for the Christmas that they bring in the extra containers, because they get, you know, five thousand TVs. They have no place to put them in the store.
Right.
And once they're gone, the containers are usually moved out. For instance, over at the one on Signal Butte in Mesa, that one I know for a fact had eight storage containers, and every single one of them's gone.
So, Rudy, do you know when this Walmart was approved, that's a PD zoning?
It's not a PD.
It's not a PD, because then it would seem you'd write into your PD ordinance that you could have eight cargo containers in your super Walmart. This definition... I'm done now. This definition...
For now.
Done for now. This one is really comes out of chapter nine. So, back in the day, the city put the cargo container regulations in chapter nine, which is our health and safety code. They went in there. So, we actually have to have an ordinance, I think I mentioned this before, to repeal the section of cargo containers, nine dash one dash five, that's in volume one, article nine, whatever I think it is, chapter whatever. So, nine dash five goes away. But we like this definition. We want to pull this definition over into the zoning code. So, now, we have to amend that. So... So, it sounds like you're going to be here on June eighth. We have another that's probably, in my opinion, even more important item than this. No disrespect to anybody, but, you know, we have a discussion about annexing sixty-two hundred acres and MPCs and all that. So, do you...
We're not making a decision on this today.
Well, we don't have a public hearing. I... Again, I'm not set up for a public hearing, really, June eighth either, because we can't get the add to the paper. Do you want to have another work session, then a public hearing at a July meeting?
We need another work session.
Yeah, I feel like we've got... There's still a fair amount of...
Chairman, have...
Give and take on this. Yes?
I kind of would like to see the... This on another work session, but allow us to, you know, send him our notes and thoughts so that he can continue to tweak.
Yeah, I will make sure about the six-foot spacing.
Maybe give us a little bit more than four days to look at this.
Pardon me?
Maybe give us a little bit more than four days to look at this.
Sure.
Oh, you're talking about the master plan.
Even this.
So, what I will do is I will take those two sections that I talked about that should be in RSGR. I'll duplicate those. I will limit in the smaller lots it to a hundred and sixty or an eight by twenty. The... I think I have to add that same language in the RS fifty-four, fifty-four M on some sort of limits. I think I can go back and look at the RS fifty-four and the sidewalls and all that, and maybe just do anything over twelve feet has to be thirty feet. Just keep that one paragraph.
Yeah.
And then, I could delete, if you want, that section. Delete on bottom of page four, that word says L, parent L, parent A. Just leave it as is on the Quonset huts? No Quonset huts?
No Quonset hut.
All right. So, I'll strike that. And then, I guess I'm... People don't like flowers and plants, so I'm going to delete. I'm going to...
Well, Larry, one of the big things... If I can get you to pay the water bill.
There's just no way to shade and shield mare motels and shade structures for horses to where, you know, they're going to reach through the fence and eat everything you plant.
Yeah. So, if they're... Essentially, what we're going to say is that, again, that's going to be up for debate, but right now, if this, whatever the accessory structure is, if it's decorative, we're not going to worry about landscaping. Okay?
If it meets the criteria, you have been here of matching the house.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, should it state either be painted earth tone or match the primary structure?
No, and the seventy-five percent rule. It's not just paint.
Right.
We... Right now, we require no metal sheds in town.
Right.
So, we don't want to walk back on that.
For the colors.
The colors have to match the house or be earth tone. If it's a pink polka dot, you want to match your house, it's pink polka dot.
Yeah, but all you have in there right now is earth tones.
Yeah.
So, shouldn't it say earth tones or match primary?
Yeah, that's fine.
I thought it did say that.
It doesn't. It says earth tone.
Somewhere, I saw that it says match the house.
I have... No, it says complement the color of the house. So, I can... I can make sure that it's like either or, what you're saying. It's got to match or...
Right.
Now, let me be totally cynical and say that, okay, this whole issue is basically being discussed because there was an argument at the city council, okay? Are they going to approve all of this language?
Absolutely.
Or are we just wasting our time?
No, they're going to weigh in on this, just like you are.
Yeah.
So, hopefully... No, there was... Gentleman was just here. He just left. They have RSGR. They have an acre. They don't have an acre and a quarter. They want a cargo container. This gets them a cargo container. So, how the rest of it shapes out, it's still in ordinance-making mode, so it's still not...
Larry, when we complete our work sessions, there are still been two public hearings on this we would have to hold as well?
No, just one. You only required to have one.
Oh, okay.
So, ideally, you would finish what you're doing, then we would set it up for a public hearing sometime in July, and then it would go to the council, probably in early August. Depends on how many more changes we make.
Mr. Chair.
How does this affect the ten sheds I buy at Lowe's or Home Depot?
The ten sheds...
Doesn't.
They're under a hundred and twenty.
If they're under a hundred and twenty square feet, they don't need a permit.
How would this affect me if I went and got an eight-foot by eight-foot by ten-foot-long cargo container?
Doesn't.
Eight-foot by eight-foot...
Eight-foot wide, eight-foot high, ten feet long?
Doesn't.
If it's under a hundred and twenty... If it's under a hundred and twenty square feet, it doesn't matter.
So, everything under a hundred and twenty square feet, we're not even talking about?
Well, I don't know why you need the third dimension. It's eight by ten. What's the third dimension? Ten foot?
Height.
Their height, eight feet high.
Well, do you want to limit them to eight-foot high? Why do you want a ten-foot-high cargo? I don't think you can buy them.
No, they don't come ten-foot.
Yeah, but if you have an eight by ten cargo container, you don't need a permit.
But I can go down here to Tough Shed and buy it... Buy an eight-foot or a ten-by-ten shed that's ten feet tall.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't need a permit. Doesn't matter.
No permitting.
No, I'm just using the eight-foot height as a reference.
Yes. That's what they...
So, I don't have to make any changes. I can go down here to South Phoenix and buy me an eight-foot by ten-foot-long cargo container, put it in my yard, and I'm good.
Correct.
Buy a ten by twelve, and you're good.
Actually, you can buy it...
They don't come...
Well, you can buy an eight by...
Well, I'm saying a shed, ten by twelve.
Eight by fifteen.
Eight by... Well, they'll cut it whatever size you want, probably an even number, eight by fourteen, whatever that is. Who's a mathematician?
Eight by fifteen is a hundred and twenty.
All right. So, eight by fourteen, no permit.
I'm just looking for clarification, is what you got there, because there was nothing in there on... On any of the less than a hundred and twenty square feet.
Yeah. Today, it's supposed to meet setbacks, but you don't need a permit.
Eight by fifteen, I'll get you in the door.
Okay.
All right.
You guys want a five-minute break? I think you need one.
I need a five-minute break.
I highly suggest it.
Take a five-minute... Five-minute break, and our crowd is awaiting the next...
Claire. Peace. I told you. I told you.
Can we make this into four weeks worth of? Do about that much.
What you got?
What?
So, to make it easy, they put it in and make them nice.
They can keep them. That I can't, I can't argue that.
You know, so why make it so hard?
Yeah. And I, and I, I don't disagree, I guess, like, to me, the cargo container is gonna look like, it's gonna, it'll, even maybe unless you fix them up, they're just always gonna look like an ugly cargo container, you know?
I've seen some people do some neat things with it.
I was trying to bring-
No, and some of the ones we saw were, but people around here aren't, they're not doing that.
It's changing.
Well, maybe, maybe it is, but I, I mean, what I've seen, I've got on my street, I probably have three properties with cargo containers, and I'm, trust me, they ain't doing jack with them. They are, they've got the, they've got the brand and the, you know, all that stuff on them, so.
That's crazy. There's a whole metal building.
We're, we're just excited about the continued conversation about-
Oh, wow.
-containers. All right, are we ready to proceed?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, so, next item on the agenda is new business. It's case AM-3-20. That's presentation and discussion of the proposed master plan community rezoning for auction property at the Superstition Vistas, the master plan community plan draft, April 14th, 2021, consisting of 2,783 acres lying in sections 17, 18, 19, and 20 of Township One South.
Good evening, Commission. For the record, my name is Sidney Rice, one of the planners on staff. If you think item one and two tonight were long, this one's longer.
Thank God.
We're gonna, yeah, no problem. We're gonna go through all of the 264 pages tonight in detail. Just kidding.
Hey, Sidney.
Yes, sir.
Are they gonna allow cargo containers down there?
Actually, Vice Chair, it's, it's actually, it is addressed in, in the plan.
You do, you're in here.
It is, I could even point you to the specific question.
I read that, I know.
It's on that chart in there.
It says no.
That's right, that is correct.
Bring on the low.
All right, so, the reason for tonight's presentation is really a high level overview tonight, just a general introduction to the 264 pages. Tonight, we will not be going over the details of the plan. In fact, I'm going to save that heavy lifting for the development team, which will be here on 6/8. Both represent, both the planners for Brookfield and D.R. Horton. That will be their opportunity to really go over the details of the plan. Tonight, I'm really just gonna give you a kind of a general overview of it. So this MPC, which is really the zoning ordinance for this specific area of land between Elliott and Ray and Meridian and Idaho, that's the four square miles that this MPC is really addressing, it's made up of kind of two parts. One is the MPC, which is the zoning ordinance, and then it's, there's a second layer of the plan, which is called Development Unit Plan, which is the latter portion of the document, which provides more, more detail for staff and parameters for the developer to abide by. Once those two sections, it's really, it's, it's two sections but made up in one document. Once those two sections really get finalized, it will give the, the developer assuredy of what they could do, and it'll give us mechanisms to review their pre-plats. So, document number one is the MPC, document number two is the Development Unit Plan, which is part of the MPC, it's kind of the second half of it, and then that, the last portion of the planning phase will be preliminary plats and final plats, if that makes sense. The MPC outline is really broken down into four chapters. Really, the bulk of the planning efforts happen in the regulatory framework, which is chapter three. Chapter three itself has a lot of administrative, text, but the bulk of that, that chapter is, is really the Development Unit Plan and development standards and design guidelines. So that's really what kind of we're gonna go over tonight, is subsections 3.6 and 3.7 of chapter three. So the sections 3.6 is, are, really note all the mass reports that are associated with this MPC. So it will note the drainage plan, water plan, wastewater plan, non-podable water plan, path and trail plan. Some of those documents, we don't have yet, and they're just, as noted in the plan, they're just placeholders. We are still working on reviewing them and finalizing them. Once we finalize them, it will either be referenced in the plan or will be included in the plan. Section 3.7 takes what 3.6 did, but gets more into detail. If you look at section 3.7, it is very, it is very similar to what we currently have in our zoning ordinance. Section 3.7 takes a lot of the sections out of our zoning ordinance and, and molds them in specifically to this MPC. For example, has residential commercial standards, those are the setbacks and lock coverage. We have street sections that are typically found in our subdivision guidelines and what the streets will look like. We have parameters on architecture and what the homes should look like, what commercial development should look like. We also have a more specific, more specific plans for landscape standards that, that were, that were kind of intro'd in section 3.6, and then we have very specific lighting standards that are dark sky compliant. We have reviewed these 264 pages along with all the mass reports. We've done this in about 30 days, planning staff and all the departments and the sewer districts and, and the, and the water district. We have come up with really nine key areas, and, and of course, you have the 14 pages of, of comments that we have sent back to the, the development team that we are working on, but, but really, the, the nine key overall areas are one, one water planning element that is, that has been discussed and has been approved by, by the citizens of, the residents of Apache Junction through the general plan. We have low impact development, which is really kind of a smart approach for water retention and detention, civil engineering standards, really. We have proposed additional architectural standards for this area. We have made sure that all the language in their lighting, in their lighting section is IDA compliant, and we were able to confirm that today with, with the developer, and we're still working on some things that the city might, might still want to see, and, and, but the majority, all of the language will be dark sky compliant. We have asked for more information regarding public facilities where the police substation, if, if, if the city and the developer still wants to have a police substation there, where the public parks will be located, where the library will be located. So we are still working on the details of, of that. We have also conveyed to them that we want detached sidewalks throughout, throughout their street sections, and, and the majority of the street sections do have detached sidewalks, but our ask from, from, from staff to them is that they have detached sidewalks on the local streets. So for example, in front of your house, to, of course, encourage walking and safety and beautification, really, of the neighborhood. We have also made some changes to their signage plan, unfortunately, and fortunately, they used our signage plan, but it's, our signage plan in our zoning ordinance is a bit outdated, so we, we have been working with them. And then for the first 2,800 acres, we have asked them not to include any age restricted communities, which they are still, they're still kind of weighing, weighing that, and they are still considering it.
Really, they're, they're really interested in making part of this age restricted?
Chair, heck, they are, they have asked for that, I'm not sure if they have any plans for now, but I don't think they wanna take it off the table, but we have, we have encouraged them to-
Take it off the table.
Exactly, to now, not allow that as an allowed use in a residential district. And of course, because we have so many of them here, and we are trying to fill up our schools and provide a different demographic and provide really a balanced population within the community. And then, of course, it is, the document is 264 pages long, it is a long document, but staff feels that we still need additional detail in the plan, not only for, not only for us, but really for them. We want to have really a clear picture in terms of what the city will be getting and how, how the, how the development will be administered and regulated, and, and we want those control mechanisms in place. So a lot of our comments, if, if you were able to review the last attachment on this item number seven on your agenda, it really asks just for a lot more detail, and we're working on that, and we've been meeting with the developer, and, and they will be providing additional detail on their next submittal of this big document here.
And where will you see that when they have revised?
Commissioner Burke, absolutely, yes, yes.
Okay.
So with those parameters in place, with additional detail, the developer will be able to provide pre-plats. So they have actually submitted, they've, they've been working very hard to, to work, get through this process as, as, as most, most efficiently as possible. They have submitted a pre-application meeting for a pre-plat. So this is an example of that, and this is the first square mile, I'm sorry, this is the quarter, a first mile from Warner to Ray Road and Meridian to Ironwood. The parameters in the MPC would give us the ability to review this, this type of submittal. And I'm not gonna spend too much time on those slides because they're subject to change, we're still reviewing it. If we change the MPC, chances are that we're going to change, there's gonna be changes in, in the site plan and, and this pre-plat here, but what, those parameters in that MPC would give staff the tools to evaluate this type of plan. So that, that is why we are asking for additional detail. So I wouldn't get hung up too much on the design of, of this site plan, it's just an example of how we would, how we would evaluate it. So we have upcoming dates, and, and we discussed dates with the development team today. They have, of course, they are eager to get this through, but there's still a lot of documents that need to be updated and finalized and reviewed by staff before we get there. So a lot of these dates are tentative, other than the public open houses. We have two open house meetings, one is, and that is, of course, in the middle of your screen there, one is dated on 6/14 here at the MGC, and the other one is on 6/23 at the MGC, and I think I would have to check my notes, but I think they're at 6:00 PM. And then on 6/8, like I previously mentioned, the development team will be able to, will be here at the, at the next Planning, Planning and Zoning Commission, and they will be able to present this document in, in a little bit more detail. And hopefully by then, we'll have, had worked through the majority of our comments, and we have, we will either have a more finalized document by them, or, or we'll have the actual submittal. And then, we had a tentative date for a public hearing on 6/22, but after our conversations with the developer today, and, and we kind of really had a meeting of minds, it doesn't appear that, that meeting on 6/22 will, will happen, will, will may, maybe push that date back, because there, there's so many moving parts still that need to be finished. And then we have a, a meeting on city council on 7/5, and that'll be a very similar meeting to what we're having tonight, it's just a really general introduction. And then, we're probably anticipating a meeting in between 7/5, or, or, or we'll use the 7/20 date for a second meeting, and then a third meeting somewhere, somewhere later for the public hearing. So we're still kind of trying to work through the schedule as well. But we wanted to present you the 264 pages of the document, so you could review. I know it's a lot, a lot of information, and then also, as well as the, the, the review comments, just to give you kind of an insight of where staff is coming from and how we are working together to get this done.
Good.
I'm here if you have any questions. I know the Suns are playing, and we're very excited that we're there in the playoffs after 15 years.
Mr. Chair.
I, I guess I maybe have a question, kind of looking back at this June 8th date. Now, I know we've already scheduled the, the continuance from the Valley Drive one. Are we doing the cargo containers too at that time?
I would love to.
We're gonna get into the same, we're gonna get into the same problem of having a long, 'cause I think this will be a lot more involved.
Well, another option would be, I guess, I guess we would just advertise it that way, is maybe we start the meeting at 6:00, maybe have the developer come from 6:00 to 7:00, and then the regular public meeting with the cargo containers and the rezoning. Do the rezoning first, and then cargo containers. So I don't know if you're, have the developer come in at 6:00, and they can give their spiel from 6:00 to 7:00, and then your meeting, the other public business, if you will, starts at 7:00.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Burke.
It appears to me, and maybe I'm dead wrong, but it appears to me that this commission will take more than an hour talking to the developers about their plan.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm wrong, but it seems like-
Is this, will this be, will those two dates, the 8th and the 22nd, really be our only opportunity to interface with the developers?
Well, it depends, again, based what Sidney just said, is, we're not sure anymore that this whole thing would be the annexation, the zoning, because on top of this, there's a second MPC document, that'll be a little thinner, but that, if you go back to that map, Sidney, the first map, there's a second MPC for the lighter blue where it says annexation area, a separate development agreement that I don't think has even been started yet. So whether this happens July 20th, I don't know that it's likely, could be August. So again, I think, you know, you should not have as many meetings as you want, but I mean, I think you're entitled to have what it takes to, to do the work, and probably makes sense to try to not, try to have this on a, on a night when there's not a lot of else going on.
I, I, that's, I guess where I was heading was, I, I feel I would like to make certain that the commission has, is not being, is not winding up the end of the evening having to look at this, you know, so if there's-
Yeah, again, if, if you wanna have your meeting at 6:00, and if it takes an hour and a half or two hours, then the rezoning is at 8:00, or however long the rezoning for the public, and then if you wanna say, well, let's not do cargo containers on the 8th, you know?
Let's push cargo containers out.
That would break my heart, but you could move the cargo containers to the second, to that other meeting.
It wouldn't break your heart if we moved it to 2025?
No, that's fine, I'm just kidding.
I'm not opposed to that.
We need to get it done, there's an expectation, we need to get it done. So, again, the 22nd, that, I don't know that that's realistic to have, that there's a public hearing on the MPC on the 22nd, when we haven't even seen the other document.
And Commissioner Chair and Commissioners, the meeting on 6/8, and the development team has conveyed to me that a portion of their meeting, they want to kind of give a brief introduction of who Brookfield is, what D.R. Horton is, they'll wanna give kind of a vision of what they want for this MGC, and, and then, and then at that time, you'll be able to kind of go into the, the details of the document, and then you will be able to ask very specific questions, hey, what's on page, you know, 19, what does 70, page 74 mean, what does this paragraph mean?
Yeah.
So I, I think that may take a bit.
That's a very long meeting. Seems to me it should be by-
So a suggestion, in lieu of trying to fit all this into a Tuesday, would there be, could we give consideration to maybe having a work session perhaps on Monday, to just look at, to just look at this master plan, the master plan community, you know, draft?
Yeah, I think you can, it's your-
And then that way, and then Tuesday, we just deal with the-
Valley and the cargo containers.
And the cargo containers, it'll-
I think that's fine, I think that's-
Important and, and at all can meet on Monday rather than Tuesday.
Is there anyone that could not meet on Monday with the group?
6/7.
Probably.
Oh, there's an art commission meeting that night at 5:00.
No, they're meeting on the 14th. I think they pushed it to the 14th, if I'm not mistaken.
I have a meeting that night, but I'll just drop out of that meeting.
Which is also the public open house for this, but it is what it is.
You're right, it's the 14th, so, yeah. Do you wanna meet earlier on Monday, the 7th, at 5:00 o'clock, would that work? Or 4:00, or 3:00?
o'clock or 3 o'clock?
I'm bored.
Right, now we're getting, okay.
Now we're getting silly.
If you want to be fresh, again, you want to be hungry when you meet with them at 5 and stay till 7, or do you want to just get here at 6? Well, we can get food if you want, that's fine. We'll have some snack.
Ooh, this could be a great meeting.
How about 5?
5 would work.
Okay, 5 o'clock on 6/7.
On the 7th, correct.
You can't eat in here, but get here early and we'll get you a snack.
Okay, I'm going to ask for forgiveness because you're mentioning that there's like an eight-page document that must have been in the electronic version and I managed to get the printed version before I got into the 264 pages, so I didn't see that document?
That was the one stamped with all their questions.
Is that this?
Yeah.
January 26th? Okay.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay. Because when I take a look at this, I mean, my major issues with the whole thing are going to be setbacks and lot coverages and so on, I, and I don't know, what, what, what is our negotiating position on that? And I guess I'd like to get a little bit of feedback on, I wasn't here when you approved Lennar, I see some of the things in Lennar that, you know, narrower streets than would be normal and it looks like smaller lots than would be normal. And I'd like to get a little bit of feedback on what's going on in Eastlake and then also some of the areas down in Santan, because my general impression is they're looking to put nothing but houses on these lots. And they're going to be right next to each other and there's going to be very little front yard, very little backyard, and we're talking about neighborhoods and there's no place. I went through Eastmark last week and driving down one of the streets, they had cars parked on both sides and barely enough room to get a car through and kids were riding skateboards down the middle of the park, oh, middle of the street. Those are things that I want to avoid and I'm just, you know, but when I take a look at numbers, I don't know, you know, I'm trying to equate that into something, so I don't know if we have any of that information.
Commissioner Cantwell, that, that, we do have that information, it is located in the MPC in the residential standard section. That's a perfect question for the developer.
I've seen it.
That is a perfect question for the developer. They are taking really a hybrid approach in terms of how they organize their zoning districts. So if you look at our zoning districts right now in our zoning ordinance, we have, you know, SF 10 or, I'm sorry, you know, we have 10 or, you know, 20,000, 35,000, you know, acre lots, things like that. The MPC really works on ranges, so they have the same setbacks for lots that are 2,000 to 4,000 and, and 40, 100 to 7,000 and et cetera. So they, they work on within ranges. So from, from this meeting to the next meeting, I encourage you guys to review the, the document and, and concerns like setbacks and be.
That's, that's what I was doing, but you know, I took a look at, you know, the example I used was a 7,500 square foot lot, okay? So assume it's 7,500. With just the setbacks, that's accounting for about 41, 42% of the lot. And since their lot coverage is based on setbacks, that would mean that they could put up a house that covers 58% of the lot.
It's 131. Commissioner Cantwell, that is correct. So those are, those are perfect questions to ask to the developer.
Okay, but my question is from staff, okay? What's your opinion on all of these? And quite frankly, what is our negotiating leverage with them, other than to say, no, hey, here's what our standards are and you have to adopt our standards and?
Commissioner Cantwell, so we had very similar questions. We had questions on, for example, let's see if I could, so this is a perfect example here. So it says a minimum lot size, 24 foot width, very narrow, extremely narrow, right? And then we have a interior side setback of five feet. Well, how would that work? So we've, we have asked them specific product examples to include in their next submittal to be able to really appropriately evaluate their request for such standards. Once we have additional information, then we will take a look at it in depth. And of course, that will be presented to P&amp;Z and council as well.
One thing I would ask is, I know that we've recently approved the Lennar over on Did we make concessions on some of these issues with them? Okay, I wasn't on the board at the time, so I don't know. From what I see, looking at it, the answer is yes.
Commissioner Cantwell, yes, that, that was a planned development as part of that.
I, I just want to know what they were.
I, I don't know the specific, I don't have that.
And I don't need it tonight.
Yes, yes, if, if you want a comparison, we could provide that for you.
And, and I'd also like some comparison for, you know, some of the areas over in Eastmark, you know.
It's online too, the minutes and all that. You could go watch the video.
Commissioner Cantwell, my understanding is the standards that they are proposing here are very similar to the standards that they are proposing at Eastmark.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
With the exception of some street standards, but if, just lot standards, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're, you're okay if, when, when we meet with the developers that we, we go down this road, not, not going, not going through development services first to make certain we're not, we're not, you know, you guys have, you guys have kind of agreed to something and then we come in and attack it from, and is.
They need to know that, you're going to make a recommendation to the council and they're going to make the final vote. So if there's, we're looking at this at two levels, I guess planners, I think we're looking at these big picture items, these nine items, right?
Yeah.
And then some folks focus on how wide is the lot? So they're going to have different housing types in there and they're going to have lots that are 4,000 square feet or 7,000, they're going to try to hit all the segments. So, but there are some things that I think from a community, whether it fits with our general plan, some of these, these are the things I'm, I'm, have more, to me, this is more important to me than, you know, is it a 24-foot wide lot? I'm not saying it's not important, but these are these big picture things, but then it also gets to some level of detail, once you drill down. We need to know both so that when, Sidney said, when a subdivision plat comes through, we know how to evaluate it. But at a, at a bigger picture level, we're also trying to say, here's really, what is this community going to look and feel like? We want to make sure that some of these planning principles are adhered to for this, because this, we think, sets the tone for the, the 3,000 acres that wraps around it and the other, you know, 7,000 acres that's already in the city that, you know, so those are just some of the things.
Well, as an example, if I'm reading this kind of right and the way I've interpreted it, you know, as I read through all these different types of housing that we can have in here, as the example you kind of pointed out was on 134, these houses are actually kind of touching each other. So this would be more of a townhouse style community within here. And then you go to the next page and they, you know, these actually have some yards. And then you go to the next page and these ones are touching, so we got all these different houses as you keep going through here. Now what we, and then you go to these ones, these actually have bigger yards and everything. So we got all these different standards. Now what we don't know yet is how many of these different tile, style of houses are going to be in this community yet. So there might only be a small portion of these that are touching, there might be this much more bigger houses, this is what we don't know yet. And when we start seeing those other pieces come in, that'll start answering a lot more of our questions and everything too.
And, you know, I'm just taking a look, I mean, what we're doing here is we're going to be setting the standards not only for this four square miles, but there's a total of what, 62 square miles in this area and that's going to be pretty much the standard.
Well, maybe, maybe not. I mean, this developer is coming forward with this, is the world going to be static for the next, this is going to take them five to 10 years to build out.
I understand.
So the next auction, we don't know when it's going to take place, but it's probably the land to the east, east of Idaho to the canal and south to the 24. And that may have more commercial. We hope it has more commercial and maybe more multifamily as you get closer to the freeway. And so that will have a different set of zoning standards because the character of the area, yes, it'll have single family, but, thanks Sidney, that area close to the 24, you know, that first quarter mile is going to be a different density, intensity. Land to the east, again, now you're looking at a north-south corridor, so are you going to see low density on, to the east side of the canal and get higher density when you get closer to the north-south freeway, which is 20 or 30 years from now? So this, I don't know that this sets a precedent. Again, I think what's important are those nine or 10, whatever they are, three or five, what are the guiding principles you want to see out here and can they be carried out throughout how they deliver the project, you know?
And sales will ultimately drive it.
Market demands will tell.
Right.
What type of houses sell the most is going to.
And again, for the city, perhaps, again, we keep driving this one water thing, but unless you solve the water picture, where does, the rest of it, can it happen? So as much water as we can conserve, following our, you know, zero escape requirements and try to reuse and, you know, again, a lot of infrastructure is going to go in here with water reuse and, over time. And, so.
I just have one comment, I guess. It seems to me that it will be very important for us to know which of the comments that staff made are incorporated into the document when we talk to them, because many of the comments that you made to their responses were things that I had already highlighted and I don't want to be repetitive with them if they've already talked to you and they've already said, okay, we're going to incorporate this idea that you had and we're not going to incorporate that thought that you had.
And they may lead off with that, again, we've met them today and talked for an hour and 20 minutes on dark sky and how we're, you know, coming along, it was a very good meeting, so maybe that's one that's not even, you know, it's up for discussion anymore because we've talked to them.
Yeah, and those are things I think we need to know.
But a part of the problem is, is that our agenda goes out next Thursday, right? So are we going to have enough of a document?
Right.
On next Thursday, we're not going to have a new document next Thursday. So I think we're just going to have to have them talk about these points of departure, if that's what you want to call them, and how we're getting closer to those discussions.
Yeah, I just didn't want to beat it at all.
Right.
Pardon me.
Nobody wants to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else you need to present now?
No, that, that is it for this evening, yes.
Thank you, Sidney.
Thank you.
You did as famous as possible.
I try, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, so moving on, the agenda next is information reports, the chair has no information or reports for the commission director's report, Larry, any?
Yeah, the score is. Score is 90 to 89. It's four minutes and 56 seconds left in the fourth quarter.
And who's winning?
Suns by one.
Good guys by one.
Suns by one.
All right.
No, I think, I think we've kind of talked in the past about what's, what's happening with staffing. I'm working on a memo, you may have seen it in the past, we used to do a development update, it used to come out like once a month and every quarter and the last time was a couple of years ago, so.
I always liked it.
Yeah, so we're, I'm working on one of those right now, I got Bryant and Matt looking at it and we'll just email that to you, late this week or early next week, so. But it's more of a summary of what's, kind of what's happened in the last five or six years. When you look at the list, there's a lot of development that's happened, a lot of it that's on the cusp, so that's kind of the only thing I want to mention.
A lot of it going on now, are you able to keep up with all of it?
Yep. Yep.
As he rolls his eyes.
Yeah, so far, we just added a building inspector, started two weeks ago Monday. We've had retirement with one of the permit texts, but we've added really two more, which one moved over from code compliance, so now we have three permit texts. You'll see that in this memo, you know, our permits, we're doing, instead of 700 a year, we're doing about 1,200 right now and that's probably going to go to 3,000. You know, both, each of these developers is talking about, you know, 100 permits a month, 80 to, so between the two, 160 permits a month.
Oh, impact fees, yes.
So again, that's part of the development agreement and how those have not been fully negotiated yet, but, so yeah, I think we're, we're doing pretty good, but we're, this new software that we did, the permit software, I think, has helped us with code compliance and with billing permits and we're using it for our planning and zoning applications. So there's just a lot of different projects at various phases of, I know we haven't met for, I don't know, six weeks, but believe me, there's still a lot going on with the timing of when people submit stuff and once stuff is approved, you don't see it again, but we have final plats coming for Superstition Station, a lot of stuff happening, so, so far, so good.
Excellent.
Yeah, we have added in this department in the budget, if the council approves it, seven more positions. So this last year, in the middle of the budget year, we added six, so next year will be seven, so that's quite a bit and so we're trying to stay ahead of that.
Yeah, very good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, selection of meeting dates, times, locations.
So we need to do a work session, right?
Right, so I guess we'll have to, we'll have to, give us the dates for the work session and the regular meeting.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, yes?
I would make the motion if you're ready for it.
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry, yes.
I move that we hold a special meeting on Monday, June 7th, 2021, at 5:00 PM in the city council chambers and a regular meeting on June 8th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers located 300 East Superstition Boulevard.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all right, roll call, Rudy?
Commissioner Cantwell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanchy.
Yes.
Chairman Heck.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Begum.
Yes.
Commissioner Barker.
Yes.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, all right, thank you everyone and hearing no other reasons to remain in session, hopefully I adjourn the meeting, thank.